No meeting.
Good evening. Welcome to the Ordinance Committee meeting of the City Council. Today is Thursday, August 7, 2025. I am temporarily chairing because the Chair Ward Seven School Committee member Shirley Azak is caught in traffic. However, she will be here shortly. We do have a quorum. I'm here. I have Counselor Texera to my immediate left, and I have Counselor Phil Griffin to his left. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you read number one?
Item number one, ordinance. An ordinance amending Article 3, Division 2, Section 2-137 Vacation Leave to amend vacation leave and personal days. Invited to attend: Dr. Troy Clarkson, Chief Financial Officer.
Welcome. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. We have been looking for ways for some time to remain competitive and to garner interest in leadership positions in the community, to attract the best candidates. As you know, I believe you were all on the council when we worked along with Chair of the Board of Assessors John O'Donnell, who was here, and Marty Brophy and some of our other department heads, did some analyses of salaries of town leaders, excuse me, city leaders, a few years back. And I think you graciously made some adjustments in the pay scale, and we've since been able to attract some excellent candidates to join us in leadership positions. The next step in that process is the vacation ordinance. It has not been updated in many, many years, I believe more than 20 years. And the vacation time that we offer our ordinance employees, which in most cases are the leaders of our government, is well below what the people they supervise get. And I think probably most challenging is that the current ordinance requires that employees work for an entire year before they're granted vacation. So I've provided a chart to you that my team put together that just gives you an overview of what the vacation benefits are of our unions and also the numbers of personal days. And so what we're proposing, in order to remain competitive, and I can tell you as an aside, I'm aware of at least one, if not more, searches that occurred recently where we were in the final stages of making an offer to an employee that was ultimately rescinded when they realized they wouldn't be able to have any vacation time for an entire year. So this proposal adjusts that and makes vacation available after 90 days, and it also adds in the ability to take up to four personal days. So I believe it's a very reasonable step forward to enhance the time that's available, but it's certainly very reasonable and is comparable to what has offered other employees in the city. So I think it will be a very effective tool to help us remain competitive. And again, I know I'm repeating this, but I think it's important. These are the folks who work in leadership positions in our community, so I think it's important to recognize them and to recognize their efforts and provide them with the time to have a good work-life balance. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, councilors? Counselor Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Clarkson. I'm all for this. I'm just curious, how many weeks can be, or days can be carried over from year to year?
So what we did provide you was the section of the ordinance. I believe that the vacation time, only a certain amount could be carried over. I'm not sure exactly, but the personal days...
In the state, we can carry two weeks over. I'm sure it must be pretty similar, 14 days.
I think that's the case. On the case of the personal days, we wrote it intentionally so that those would not accumulate and be a liability to the city. So if the personal days are granted, they have to be used.
You can never have more than W or a lot. So if you get two weeks, you can never have more than four weeks on the block.
Okay. That sounds reasonable.
So if the vacation age never ends, you have more than seven weeks.
And the personal days have to be used by the year, or you lose.
Yes. Yeah, that's in this proposal.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Texera, anything?
Yeah, that was a question I was going to ask. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. You know, because the carry, I see on the police, they can carry up to seven days, the fire department up to seven days, and nothing on building department, water. So it doesn't say nothing on this chart that they can carry off.
Right. Yeah, because these are the unions, but we wanted to provide all of the information on all the other employees so that you could see that comparatively this proposal is very reasonable and in many cases less than what counterparts get. And there is no, currently no education incentive for our ordinance employees, but at some point in the future, that's something we'd like to discuss with you as well.
So this proposal, after seven and a half months, you'll get two weeks vacation?
The proposal is that after 90 days, an employee would get two weeks vacation, but if within that first six months, I believe it is, that they leave, they wouldn't be able to get any compensation for that. Right now, you have to work a full year to get the two weeks of vacation.
Oh, you got to work a full year.
So this, after 90 days, you'd be able to take time off.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Clarkson, I just have one question regarding Section K, and it says, "Vacation credit for prior experience notwithstanding the foregoing. The mayor shall have the authority to credit an employee with all part of the time that that employee served in prior municipal employment or in any other relevant prior employment as determined by the mayor when calculating the number of weeks of vacation leave, et cetera, et cetera." My concern, well, there are two concerns. One is that I wouldn't want someone who perhaps worked in another community for 10 or 12 years to come in here and then have more vacation time than one of our career department heads who's been here for less time, but the person externally would come in and jump ahead of that person. And the other thing that I was worried about is that it, and it says, "Or in any other relevant prior employment as determined by the mayor." So, I mean, I'm trying to think of an example. Let's take the health department. Dr. Mondesir is here. If someone worked in a hospital health setting and the mayor decided that that person had relevant prior experience, they could jump ahead of someone who's been a career employee here. So how would you respond to those concerns?
I think both excellent questions. I think in the first scenario, the intent of this language is not to allow someone to bring with them the entirety of their vacation that's accumulated. It is intended, if somebody has long service in another community, to be able to not start at the very beginning, right? And so I'll give you a real example. Karen Praval worked here for the city of Brockton. She left, went to the town of Milton, and then came back. And that's what, one of the things that spurred this discussion so was, and the ordinance was unclear about that, about whether or not her vacation time would be restored, essentially her time in service would be used in calculating her time. The total amount of time in the entire ordinance isn't in here, but the ordinance, for ordinance employees, does provide specifics about how many years and how much vacation you get. So you start with two, and then it goes up to three, and then so on. So the intent of this is to allow somebody with service in another community to be able to qualify within the parameters of this ordinance to get that time. And that's, the language is, I believe, contemplates that. So it wouldn't grant anyone anything other than what other city employees are granted. I think the second scenario, again, I think that specific language, it could certainly be construed in a way that other service in a nongovernmental setting, I think the intent was if someone served in an authority, somebody worked at the MBTA or something like that, which generally would be equitable to this kind of public service, it would allow them the same opportunity to get the vacation time. But I think most importantly, the intent was to recognize people's service in other communities. I'll use myself as an example. You know, granted, the positions that I held before I came to Brockton, I was the CEO of the community, so I would walk in the door with five, maybe six weeks of vacation. When I came here, because the ordinance is written the way it is, my wife and I go on a vacation every March. When I first started here, I worked for a couple of weeks and then took my annual vacation in March and was not paid for it. So it's those kinds of things that we're trying to correct because we're asking people to come to positions of leadership in the community, and we're just trying to make that vacation allotment equitable internally and externally.
And I do agree that we should make it as attractive as possible to recruit people for sensitive positions that are so important. Let me ask it a different way. Could someone with substantial prior experience in another municipality come to work here and then after 90 days, go right to four weeks vacation, the way this is worded, the way that Section K is currently worded? Would that be possible?
I think, yes, that would be possible.
It would.
But I also think it's part of the intent. If somebody came in here with 20 years of experience, then when we're asking them to come join us, that's not unreasonable and certainly, I believe, in line with what they would be able to do in many, if not most, communities. One more point I didn't make in my opening. In our union positions, when people take vacation, it often costs additional money to fill those slots. As you know, when a department head or a senior position takes time off, generally there isn't an additional cost. If they're out an extended period of time, we may promote someone into an acting position, but generally, when an ordinance position goes on vacation, there is not an additional cost to fill that time while they're out.
Yeah, I was more worried about the morale factor, that it might be perfectly acceptable to recognize someone with 15, 20 years' experience somewhere else in the same position, but I'm also concerned with the people who have been here, and I don't want that tension between department heads, because all of you kind of work as a collaborative group to make sure all of the different functions of government are carried out. So I don't have a suggested change in wording at this point, and I don't want to hold this up, but I'll reserve the right to perhaps work with you and maybe hear from other department heads about how we might just change a couple of sentences in here to make sure that we don't have someone walk through the door and then in 90 days max out their benefits while other people are working towards that level of attainment.
Understood.
Anyone else? Any motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. There's been a motion to recommend favorably. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? It is a vote.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number two.
Item two, ordinance. An ordinance to amend the pay plan ordinance to include the position Deputy Director of Public Works and to set the wage scale for the position. Invited to attend: Dr. Troy Clarkson, Chief Financial Officer, Patrick Hill, DPW Commissioner, Mayor Robert Sullivan, or his designee.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, councilors. So this was before you, I think, some time ago, five, six weeks ago, in early June. Basically, this position, we're asking for this position because I'm struggling to fill the water system manager position, a position which requires possession of a 4D distribution license with the state, and it's actually a federally recognized license, something that's mandated by the Safe Drinking Water Act that we have. That person is basically in charge of all of the distribution network or all the piping network throughout the city. This city requires somebody to have a 4D license, which is the top tier of license in the distribution side of things. There are not a lot of 4D operators out there. We made multiple attempts to fill the position. We posted it. I received no applications with any distribution license experience. So in working with the mayor, in working with the solicitor, we made several attempts to look at the water system manager position and upgrade it. However, there were concerns based on the value, where we think that value should be, that we would still not attract somebody with a 4D operator license. We've made, and I sent an email off to everybody, we made an attempt to kind of do a stopgap for a few years to bring somebody in with Veolia, who is our contractor that runs our water and wastewater treatment plants. We did come up with some form of a solution. However, the value of that solution was not amenable by the city. So upon Howard Newton, God rest his soul, when he passed away, I had the opportunity to take two positions, the water systems manager and the superintendent of engineering, take those salaries, combine them. I came up with a position which should read as the deputy commissioner and attach that license. And I feel as though with the pay grade that we put that in, that I could probably attract somebody with a 4D license and will also fill some other gaps that I have in the DPW.
Questions?
I got a quick question.
Counselor Texera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this position that we're going to create, or you're going to create, it's, we're going to take those two position, those two pay position and pay for this position?
So those two positions, originally the water systems manager at top rate was $108,000. The superintendent of engineering was just a little bit above that, so about $220,000 worth of salaries. The max for the position that I'm asking for, based on the pay scale, would be $151,000 or $152,000.
Are we, near the future, are we going to, the position, are we ever going to refill this position or just...
If it's approved, I'll have to post it. I have put some, you know, through the network, my network, through other people, I know that there may be some interest for people to come here. I still think it will be a difficult position to fill. The 4D operator in, you know, outside of the city of Brockton, I can tell you, makes probably $180,000 a year, and there are very many of them. There aren't very many people that seek these licenses, and because of the level of experience that's required to get it, it's very difficult to obtain because you have to work within the distribution system for so many years. You get a license, you get what's called an OIT, which is an operator in training. You have to be an operator in training for several years before you can apply to the board to be made permanent. So I'm hopeful that this will check the box. There's no guarantee, but this will be my last attempt, or won't be my last attempt, but this will be my strongest attempt, I think, to kind of fill this. You know, we just had a sanitary survey, which happens every three years. The DEP comes in, they look at, you know, all of our records, they look at all of our treatment, you know, any kind of treatment issues that we have, all of our treatment records, they look at our water tanks, they look at our distribution network, and they write a report. And I got the call from DEP last week. They told me that, you know, this distribution, not having a distribution operator is a big deal. I've had multiple conversations with Jim McLaughlin, who is the head of the Southeastern Regional Office for Water Distribution. He has told me in the past that he's not going to let this slide anymore. I know that my sanitary survey had a couple of deficiencies. I will be getting that back this week. The distribution operator will not be a part of that because I'm getting a separate administrative consent order for not having a distribution operator. So something a little bit more penalizing than just being part of that report. So it's something that we need, it's something that we're going to have to have. You know, I'm sure that that ACO will come with a timeline. Typically, they don't give you a lot of time, and then we're going to be kind of at the will of, you know, some kind of consultant or something to get somebody on board, and it may very well look like that document that I sent you guys earlier.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Mission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I might, Mr. Chair, just for, Counselor Texera, just to follow up on that, and Pat and I were discussing this just before the meeting started. So as he described, the funding is coming from positions that exist, and so our overall spending will be less because of the structure of this position where it will reside. At some point, we will need to transfer money from within the budget into the commissioner's budget to fund the position, but the overall amount of spending with this will be less than if those other two positions were filled.
Just a couple of questions to either one of you, gentlemen, because I've spent quite a bit of time on this. We had a water systems manager, and now if we go with a deputy director of public works or a deputy commissioner, however you wish to define that job, you're basically making that person the second in charge of the entire DPW. And if we're going to do that, and I think I spoke to the commissioner a couple of years ago, we really ought to look at the entire structure of the DPW. There are so many different components to it that I don't know how one person can function and keep track of all of them. The other thing that, several things bother me. Number one, we're in contract negotiations, and I'm not fishing for information, but I understand that we might be offering our employees a percent and a half, and then if you factor in rising costs for health insurance, they're going to get peanuts. And so to create a position, a very substantial position, right now, again, I worry about employee morale because I respect the people that go out there, especially your people, Commissioner Hill, who go out and do work that most people wouldn't want to stand in a trench and take care of. The last thing that I would say is that while $225,000 for the next year to pay a vendor to provide us with a licensed person, if you take the amount of salary that we would commit, and then you add in all of the extra benefits, health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, withholding taxes, pension payments, and then if the person, if we do go with a permanent position, now eventually that does affect our pension, unfunded pension liability because at some point that person would be eligible for a pension from us, depending upon when this other ordinance passes, if they come in with substantial prior experience, they might go right to the $150,179. So this is just me, where it's a democracy. I would much rather wait, get a new administration, there'd be another council coming in, but we go with a one-year contract with Veolia with an option to renew for the $225,000, if that's in fact what they've offered us. That will comply with what we need to do for the state, and it will also buy us some time to take a look at what do we want our DPW to look like. Maybe we need a deputy commissioner. I mean, we don't have a deputy police chief, which I find a bit extraordinary. We have deputy fire chiefs, but Pat's department really should be looked at in terms of the organizational structure. So that's just my feeling. I would not vote for this tonight for all of the reasons that I just mentioned, and I would like to recognize the chair who has come in. Madam Chair, we are on number two, and if you have any comments, I can pass the gavel down to you, so.
Thank you, Counselor. So thank you. So sorry I was late, but I do have a couple of questions for Commissioner Hill. Thank you. So commissioners, say this doesn't pass this evening. What are we looking at?
I would have to open negotiations, find a vendor that could supply the service, right? Find somebody that, because the way that the 4D operator reads in the Safe Drinking Water Act, it's somebody that has to be on staff for 35 hours a week, meaning that they only have to work for this community 35 hours a week. So that's why you see the price tag. And just before I forget, one thing that's important about that agreement that I sent you, too, is that the goal of that was to try to train the staff that we have currently. You know, bringing in the vendor wasn't ideal, but it came with training. So, you know, I would have somebody on staff that would be able to train my staff currently to get these licenses so that we wouldn't run into this issue in the future. And, you know, it does seem like a lot of money, but I agree in the value side of things. I wasn't looking for a full-time person. I was looking to try to elevate somebody on my own staff, and that was the best approach that I could come up with.
So that's the 225 that with Veolia?
That's where we left off, yes.
So once again, so if it's not approved, then you're going to go back and...
I'll be left with no other option. If I don't have somebody on staff, I can't fill it as it exists today. I will have to get ahold of a vendor. I'm sure there'll be, when I get my ACO from the DEP, there'll be a timeline on it. So it'll be, you get an operator by X date, or the penalties will start.
With your experience, like how much time do you think, would they normally give?
I mean, they're not going to put us in a position where they, you know, they know that these things will take time. I'm sure as long as we're showing some progression in one fashion or another, they'll be somewhat lenient, but they're not going to give us forever. It's been almost two years since we had one, so.
Okay. So as far as the ordinance that we're working on this evening, creating this position, I didn't, we didn't get a job description, obviously, but would this, does the job description include that they have these certifications?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The job description, and I'm not sure, I'm quite certain that I sent that over with the initial order, kind of lays out the total job responsibilities of a deputy commissioner, and it wasn't just for overseeing water work, it was for overseeing the entire department, so.
So it would cover what you needed?
Water, sewer, highway, refuse, yeah, the whole gamut.
Okay. I'll let you finish this, Council, Council, Paul.
I really don't have anything else to say other than, you know, I would not vote, I would vote against this so that we go to the vendor for 225,000, which includes training, and I would like to see someone promoted from within, so. But I, obviously, it's the will of the committee.
Okay. So...
I mean, I'll...
Yeah, if you want to finish this one, since you... Either way.
Well, I mean, I could move to table, or I could move to postpone. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. Want me to move the table, and then it can come off the table at some point, or...
It's up to you. I'm not sure how the other councilors are...
I'll move to table, then.
Okay.
Tableless.
So there's a motion to table. Those in favor of tabling?
We need a second.
Oh, we need a second? Yeah.
Second.
So it's been, motion's been made and properly seconded to table. Those in favor of tabling? Okay. The motion, those in...
Oh, for opposition.
Those in opposition of tabling?
Opposition of tabling.
Tabling, okay. So that motion of tabling fails. Now, is there another motion?
A motion to recommend favorably?
A motion to recommend favorably.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
If you are going to make a motion to recommend favorably, I think that there should be amendment to change director to commissioner, just so that we get it right.
I would agree.
I often find we have some conflicting commissioner deputies. So if someone was interested before, favorable recommendation to just change out director and call it commissioner in both spots.
So we need a motion to change director to commissioner?
I'll make a motion to change the title from director to commissioner.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion to amend director to commissioner in the title of the position. All those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? The amendment carries?
And then if someone wants to recommend favorably, it'd be recommend favorably as amended.
I'll make a recommendation to approve it favorably to the deputy commissioner of Public Works.
As amended. There's been a motion made and properly seconded to accept this favorably as amended. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The ordinance passes.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.
Item number three, Chair?
Item number three, yes.
Item number three, ordinance. An ordinance to amend... An ordinance to amend the Pay Plan Ordinance to include the position Director of Social Services and to set the wage scale for the position. Invited to attend, Dr. Troy Clarkson, Chief Financial Officer, Mayor Robert Sullivan, or his designee.
Thank you. I just wanted to address that the mayor did contact me and let me know that he wasn't able to make this evening's meeting, but that Dr. Clarkson would be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Happy to discuss this item as well. As you know, the Director of Social Services has been a position in the mayor's office under at least the last three mayors that I've worked under, Mayor Carpenter, Mayor Rodriguez, and now Mayor Sullivan. And it is an important position, dealing with a lot of important social, economic, quality-of-life issues in the city. So, now that you have taken the steps to create a Department of Health and Human Services, this proposal would simply codify that position under the Department of Health and Human Services and have that person be in ordinance position and report to and through that Director of Health and Human Services. And so, the position now, although it has been in place for many years, is at the pleasure of the mayor. And so, this is an attempt to codify it so that it becomes a position that's permanent under the city's ordinances.
Thank you. Counselors, questions? Comments?
Well.
Council Power?
Again, I'm concerned that we're in the middle of collective bargaining. I'm also concerned that I don't have a job description, although I know what the Director of Social Services does. Again, we have a new administration coming in in January. This is a city of at least 105, if not 120,000 people. What should our social services component in this city look like? Is one person enough? Is one person and some support staff enough? And I just think we're jumping the gun here on approving another position at a time when I'm uncomfortable doing that. So, I would not vote for this. And if, in a perfect world, I would, I would table it and wait for the next administration to come in and take a look at what the next mayor thinks should be our social services component, along with the new Commissioner of Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments, questions? No?
So, I would just like to add that I agree with you, Councilor Farwell. And unlike the previous position, the DPW, I feel this one has been, it's been in the mayor's office for many years, way before, I know it's been there for many years, held by one person. And at this time, I feel like there's no urgency to move forward with it, especially since I think we have the Director of Health and Human Services that just, there's a person that's in that position now that's going to be coming before the City Council for approval, I believe, in a couple of weeks. So, I think we need to get our exit order, get, you know, get the descriptions of these job descriptions and figure out how to do this right. So, I think this, there's no urgency to do this at this time, so I agree with you, Counselor. We'll entertain a motion?
A motion to table?
Second.
Motion's been made to table and properly seconded. All those in favor of tabling? All those opposed? This ordinance is tabled. Thank you, Dr. Clarkson.
Thank you all very much.
Madam Clerk, number four.
Item number four, ordinance. An ordinance to reestablish the R-5 Senior Residential Community Zone to Section 27-4 designation of zones of the Brockton City Ordinance and to amend Section 27-27.6 R-5 Senior Residential Community. Invited to attend, Attorney James Burke, Law Office of James M. Burke, Rob May, Director of Economic Planning and Development.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know this item has come back to us from our city, from the City Council, the full City Council meeting. I know a few of the Counselors, members of the Ordinance Committee, have requested information that we haven't received yet to be able to make the correct changes with the ordinance in order for us to be able to vote on this matter. So, I don't know if Counselors, did, Council Power, did you want to speak on this?
Madam Chair, I will say, Mr. May did provide quite a bit of information. But this is an important issue, and it's still going through a lot of evaluation. And I do think it would be appropriate, especially where Council Rodriguez isn't with us. I think Council Thompson has an interest in this. Council Nacastro, I believe, is away. So, this would be appropriate to table this.
Counselors, anything else? Counselor Griffith Dexter? No?
We, yeah, I mean, we could vote to take it off the table. But I'll move to postpone to a future Ordinance Committee meeting at the call of the Chair.
Second.
A motion's been made to postpone this ordinance, and it's been properly seconded. All those in favor of postponing? All those opposed? The matter, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Attorney Burke.
It is postponed.
Item number five, ordinance. An ordinance to amend the Fairground Overlay Ordinance to amend language relative to parking minimum. Invited to attend, Rob May, Director of Economic Planning and Development.
Good evening, Counselors.
Good evening, Mr. May. I would just like to recognize that Attorney Burke is here with us. He was here for the previous item as well. Good evening, Mr. May.
Madam Chair, I actually filed this ordinance. If you don't mind, I would just like to explain to all of you that my understanding, and I would defer to Attorney Burke, we have people interested in developing the fairgrounds. We currently have a parking requirement, or restriction, or policy, which may or may not be advantageous. And so, I filed this without any particular number in mind. But I wanted Mr. May to come in and give us his professional judgment on how we could take that particular issue and work with developers and advance the interests of the city. So, thank you, Mr. May.
Thank you, sir. You remember, the City Council worked very diligently last fall to adopt a zoning overlay district for the fairgrounds to encourage residential and mixed-use development in the area. The, that overlay was then mapped on the southern half of the site. That is the site that is on Forest Avenue and gets close to the both residential community neighborhood and to Brockton High School. At that, those series of meetings, actually, Council had adopted a parking ratio per number of units. And I can't remember what that number is right off the top of my head. What is still in that ordinance, though, is a preference or requirement that the amount of surface parking spaces, not the ratio of parking spaces per unit, but the where those units, or where those parking spaces are located, is that no more than 30% of those spaces should be surface parking. The thing that we were trying to avoid were, was a sea of surface parking with a tower sort of in the back of the project. We wanted to encourage podium-style development, which is where, if you are familiar with 121 Main Street, right here on the Sycamore on Main, where you have some retail in the front, the building extends to the back of the lot, and you have people who park underneath the podium of the building. I think that is still our goal and something that the city should try to accomplish. However, I think that the ratio of 30% is probably too high. Actually, too low, if you're going in the opposite direction. But I think that any parking design requirement could certainly be dealt with in a redevelopment agreement. So, it would be probably not harmful for the city to give that up at this point and consider how parking is dealt with through a redevelopment agreement.
So, I get, let me make sure I understand. So, my amendment was to strike this language in its entirety. Are you saying that we should do that and then let the development go through different iterations with?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, as opposed to changing the 30% to 50%, or?
I would prefer a more solid number there. But if it's the Council's pleasure to be able to allow the mayor and whoever their administration appoints to negotiate that, that is, that is fine.
Because this just is not my wheelhouse, and I'm not familiar with percentages of parking. And so, I'm glad that you and Attorney Burke are here, Madam Chair.
I'll say, Council Power, Council Burke?
Madam Chairman, may Mr. Attorney Burke also come up?
Sure. I just have a quick question. So, if we're striking this ver, this language out, there's, we're not putting anything else in? There's just striking this, what's in the ordinance right now?
As it's written and it's proposed right now, we're just completely striking the language. So, we're not affecting the number of parking spaces. We're just affecting where they're located on the site.
Okay. Attorney Burke, did you want to speak on the matter?
Be happy to join, Mr. May. My recollection is somewhat similar to the city planners. But I'll tell you, the language in relation to the percentages came up kind of late in the discussion. And at that time, I said it's going to be a problem. But we all worked very hard to try to get a very complicated and difficult piece of legislation through. And we did. And there, it's something that we had to deal with later, if we had to deal with it later. I've talked to every major developer who looked at this, and they say absolutely no. And it's economics. It's the cost of construction. You know, palladium construction, very expensive, much more expensive. Plus, if you look at upscale units throughout the area in Braintree, Canton, Dedham, you know, you don't have that requirement. The, we talked, in fact, there's a national builder now that has come in that does extensive building in the state of Florida, that you'd probably recognize their name. And part of the discussion was, they're not going to go forward unless this is gone. And it can't be more simple than that. And it's, I think, the suggestion Mr. May had, if we can take not a required second look, but a second look at it during the development stage to see if we could possibly reach an accommodation, that would be fine. But making it a requirement is the problem. So, I would ask that you vote in favor of Mr. Farwell, Councilor Farwell's suggestion, and strike the language. And then, as part of the filing, it, the planner and the developer can see if there's some sort of an accord they can reach related to parking. Maybe buffering would solve the problem. There may be other ways to deal with it. But I can tell you that we won't have a major developer go forward if we're stuck with that language.
Okay. Counselors, questions? Councilor Griffith?
Thank you, Attorney Burke and Mr. May. I agree with both you and with Councilor Farwell. We have 66 acres of property at the fairgrounds that needs to be developed. And we also are a city that is stopping for more revenue. Anything that impedes is, I think it's incumbent upon us to eliminate this. And this is what this amendment will do. So, I'll be voting in favor of this, and encourage my fellow Counselors also to vote for it. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Power?
Just one last comment. What made me think about this is, as some of you know, I drive a school van and I transport special ed children. And I happened to pick up someone in Canton who lives in an apartment complex. And forgive me, I just can't remember the name of the complex. Huge sprawling area, much like the fairgrounds, many, many different apartments. And there is no podium parking. It's basically all surface, very tastefully done, very nicely landscaped. And so, I thought to myself, you know, Brockton is just as good as Canton. There is no reason why we can't work with a developer and achieve the same level of attractiveness and the same degree of excellence in our developments here in Brockton as we have in Canton. And I want to do what's right for the city, but I don't want to be restrictive. And if we can, if we can do this in another way without having this restrictive language, then it would seem to me that would be the common sense way to go. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselors. So, I just have a quick, so I'm just wondering, and I'll support this because I'll support anything that will help us, you know, be friendly, business-friendly. We want people to come in and invest in our city. I'm always grateful for that. But I'm surprised more developers don't do underground parking or do surface. Like, I know it's very expensive, but Trinity 50 Center Street, they, part of their parking is underground, Mr. May, isn't it?
Yes, it is. And I should state that how the project is being financed has a heavy weight on their ability to put parking underground or into structure. Some of that can be financed through the LITC, Low Income Housing Tax Credits. But a purely market-rate deal is very, very hard to finance with the added cost of structured parking.
Okay. That answers my question. And just a quick question to our clerk. We don't need to put any other verbiage in there that, to cover, for them to be able to work with, you know, our planner, planning office, or is?
If you would like to control the restriction, you would need to change that number, that 30% number. If you're comfortable letting the mayor be able to restrict that in a development agreement, then no, you don't need to change anything.
But do we need to put in there that it would, is it up, is it in the ver, I don't know.
Right now, it's in a section under residential parking, which I think has like a requirement of like 1.5 parking spaces.
Correct.
There. Then you have that language, and it's proposed to just strike it out. I will comment that I did review Thatcher Street, because we did use Thatcher Street as this kind of like model. And that 30% language was not in Thatcher Street. So, it's definitely something that got added in during some discussions.
And if I may, just the major difference between the two areas is Thatcher Street is much more suburban and borderline rural, where large, you see large parking lots. And if we were trying to create, and in the developer's vision at that time, there was much more of an urban feel to it. You saw that there was a, almost a small town center style development. Then podium and structured becomes much more appropriate in that case. So, that's the difference between the two.
Sure, no problem. So, just, I'm just want, I just want to make sure that we don't have to put in, so it's already in there, that it would be up to the mayor to, so do we need to put that?
The mayor could also just put no requirement.
So, okay, so, so we're good, just by getting rid of this language?
If you get rid of the language, that means the City Council doesn't say what that control mechanism is. You could rely on the mayor to put that in. But the mayor may choose not to put any requirement in.
Okay.
You're just referring that decision to the executive branch.
Okay. So, in eliminating this, we're automatically sending the decision to the executive branch, correct?
You're waiving your right to make that.
We're waiving our right, okay. But my whole, I just want to make sure somebody is going to make that decision, whether it's us or the mayor. It has to be one of them, correct? It wouldn't just have, a develop, couldn't just come in and do whatever they want, say, well, it's not in the ordinance?
If it's not in the ordinance, and if it's not precluded or restricted in the development agreement, then they could. They could have 100% surface parking if it's not in the development agreement.
Okay.
I guess I, I guess I would try to close this off by saying, you know, we have to have some faith that whoever is mayor will protect the interests of the city. And there will be other layers of review on any project. And maybe Mr. May could? And maybe Mr. May could quickly reassure the public that's watching that we're not saying there should not be parameters for any development. What we're saying is we're trying to do the right thing for the city by not being so restrictive as to carve out potential developers who could do a really good job for us. So, just very quickly, outline the other levels of review, because we're not approving a project, we're striking zoning language. What are the other layers of review that we go through when something comes in, for example?
Once a developer has been identified and in this case, the development conforms to the proposed zoning that we have or the adopted zoning, their first step is to come in for tech review and that is a process where every single department of the city sits around a table with the developer and their team to work through the project to make sure that it's designed for both public safety, green space, open, you know, the ability to circulate on the, on the site and that it doesn't have adverse effects on the neighbors or on traffic in the area, adverse effects. Once those issues are dealt with and the plans are revised, it goes back to the planning board. There's a public hearing before the planning board where members of the community are allowed to provide testimony in either support or ask questions, make concerns. Those plans could then be referred back to tech review if there were something major that came up in the process, but generally, once the plans get to the planning board, it's, the cake is baked.
Okay. So, that's it?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
There's a saying, isn't there? I didn't make that up.
I've never heard it before, but I think you have cake on the mind.
It's a Midwest thing, I guess.
It's Council Fallow's birthday tomorrow, so you might have to bake a cake.
Happy birthday, sir.
Who's counting?
Nobody's counting.
I'm just trying to get free cake, so this is for you. Councilors, any other, anything else? Questions, concerns? No? We'll entertain a motion.
A motion to recommend favorably.
Second.
A motion's been made and properly seconded to recommend this ordinance favorably. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ordinance passes. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Councilors, with, I don't, Madam Clerk, we don't have anything else before us this evening?
Nope. Either a motion or just adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor? We have adjourned.